Senator Rothstein for making time to be here this evening. We're here for a second work session following the release of the report of the Southern Area Redistricting Committee, or the SARC. Last week, we had a work session where the SARC report was presented and board members had the opportunity to ask clarifying questions regarding the work of the SARC, to review and discuss the three primary options in the report, and to seek additional information to further your thinking regarding the implications of the report. Much of that discussion addressed the board's desire to be certain that you consider the options from the report in a comprehensive manner, including other major initiatives with impact on our capital program, such as the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. We agreed to schedule this work session this evening to continue that discussion and provide the additional information you requested. We also are here fresh from a visit from Freedom Elementary School, where you were able to see the school property and tour the facility to understand how the school operates presently. I want to thank the board for your dedication to carefully exploring this very important work. I want to once again thank the members of the SARC, including county staff and parent representatives, for their hard work and for their thorough report. We have three main objectives in mind for tonight's work session. First, we want to provide you with the additional information you requested last week relative to the capital implications of the blueprint and the capital budget process and timeline. Then, we want to be sure we answer any additional questions you may have regarding the primary options in the SARC report and allow you further discussion. Finally, while recognizing that you may decide to pause the redistricting process to better align any changes with capital timelines, should you determine to continue the redistricting process immediately, then we still wish to gain through your discussion if there is a single primary option from the SARC report that you would prefer to go to public hearing. I'll now ask Mr. O'Neill and the team to provide an overview of that additional information you requested.
Thank you Superintendent McCabe, and good evening, everyone. We honestly only have a handful of extra slides or new slides in your packet for this evening, but there's a lot of context and a lot of background contained in those slides, so we want to make sure that we do go through things very carefully, make sure we answer your questions. In addition to, in your packets, in addition to the presentation, and I do believe that Ms. Gaddis and Ms. Bowers have this presentation already available to the public on your website as well, other things in your packet include a one-page printout from your existing educational facilities master plan, so this is in the current plan which you approved in June that highlights your, what we have so far in your plan relative to the pre-K program under the blueprint, or looking forward to the blueprint. And then you also have your floor, struggling here, your floor plan from the tour you just took at Freedom a couple of minutes ago before you came back. So with that, we want to delve into those areas of additional information that Superintendent alluded to, and first, we want to talk about the blueprint and what we believe at this stage it probably means in terms of your capital program. We spent almost all of our time thus far over the months talking about the blueprint and its policy implications, and we haven't said too much about the capital implications. And in fairness to us, and in part, that's because there was a bit of a separation at the state level between the policy part of the blueprint and the capital part of the blueprint, and we're going to talk a little bit up here about how they're attempting to close that gap. Where we sit in terms of your timelines and your processes is this page from the educational facilities master plan. So your local committee, our local committee on early childhood, which last year was chaired by Mr. Wernick, Mr. Procop's a member of that committee as well, determined that we needed to try to be somewhat proactive to what we thought the blueprint was going to call for, and so we did put a placeholder in the facilities master plan. And just generally speaking, what the initial step here is, is to define a placeholder that would say ultimately, we believe we'll need two pre-K classrooms at every one of your elementary school sites. So in some cases, there's already one classroom, this would be another. In the case of Freedom, Freedom is your only elementary school, sort of with the exception of Mount Airy Elementary, because we treat PARs in Mount Airy as one kind of integrated campus in terms of the early childhood elementary program. Freedom's the only site that doesn't, or the only elementary school that doesn't currently operate a pre-K site or pre-K program. So that's the placeholder in the plan. The placeholder is also based on the concept of the eventual phase-in under the blueprint of a 50-50 split between a public and private partnership, so eventually you'll be required to have slots for eligible students or families to equate to 50% of all of the eligible slots or families in the county. And we've talked a little bit over time about how that's a bit of an unknown target, because we know, we know already that at this point, we don't have private facilities or private entities ready to assume that type of a phase-in or a burden, and we don't know what their, you know, what their likelihood is of wanting to move in that direction to have 50% of our slots available in a private partnership. And more importantly than that, if we never achieve that 50-50 split, we don't know what the policymakers at the state might ultimately say about that. Mr. Wernick, I think last time spoke about how there would be a waiver process. We don't yet know what that looks like. We don't know for how many years that might be in place. We don't know what the, what the application process would even be, and we certainly don't know if down the road it doesn't turn out to be a 50-50 opportunity, would the state at some point come back and say, well, in cases where there's not a 50-50 partnership, then the local Board of Ed is going to have to create those spots. So this is based just on the concept that eventually we would grow into a full 50-50 partnership. But even within that, there's a little bit of developing clarity as to, you know, what that phase-in would be year by year for the number of students who would fall under the definitions of being eligible. And then at the end of the day, that's parent selection, and we have really no clear way to gauge at this point what, you know, what the level of parent interest would be. So it's, it's in your plan as a starting point, but it's sort of just a starting point, I guess is how I would describe it. And then we have a bullet here, this is just an FYI to mention, then obviously, there's also an operational component to this too, as you add staff, or as you add slots and students, you're going to have to add staff, perhaps transportation and some other things. So there's a, you know, this is a capital slide, but there's also, there's also an operational ongoing impact here as well. And then at your last work session, or your first work session last week, I referenced loosely, trying to recall the fact that I did think the state was on its way to trying to build some, build some harmony between the policy side of things for the blueprint and the capital side of things for the blueprint. And Mr. Kane helped me in the intervening days recall that what I was trying to grab from the air that night was House Bill 1290, which did pass and has been enacted, and it does many things, there's many moving parts to this bill, but for our purposes for this work session and this, this topic, what it does do, and this is good news, I think overall, it does require the interagency on, interagency on School Construction Commission to ultimately include the blueprint program areas into its consideration of eligible square footage space that the state would participate in, but it's not immediate, I think, and I'll look to bill for help. I think that the law requires the IAC to develop that, those frameworks for those additional areas under the blueprint by October of '23, so really fiscal '24, before the earliest possible moment that state aid should, could begin to show up. And bear in mind, just like with the Built to Learn Act and the East Middle Project, sometimes even on the, on the due date, it still takes the state some time to develop their policies, procedures, regulations, that sort of thing. But, but you're sort of looking at least to fiscal '24 before, before we know that that money may be there to perhaps support a pre-K addition here or there. The bill, or the now law, also brings the state funding work group that just finished meeting one year ago back together for, for a new look to consider the blueprint, and all I can tell you at this point is it reconvenes the work group. It's way too premature to try to guess what that work group might specifically have interest in and work out and look at. But I guess what's important, we think, is that there is something on the horizon where the state is beginning to say, okay, we recognize we need to look at this thing a little more comprehensively. There's a capital aspect as well as a policy aspect, and I think that's overall some good news. And then lastly, and there's, this is actually referenced in the law as well, the state has recognized, and I have it here as a big unknown, but the state has recognized that when you start to look at the policy requirements under the blueprint for teacher time, that there's also some impact on space. And it's, you know, to me, it's, it's, it's sort of iffy to try to guess at this stage what that would mean. We're still doing an analysis of what we think the staffing requirements would be. But when you look at a law that says ultimately, teachers have to teach, and this is an oversimplification of the whole thing, but teachers should be teaching 60% of their, of their time, and 40% would be on other types of professional collaborative activities, where, where does all of that happen? And we were talking about it a little bit at Freedom, and, you know, Freedom's a highly utilized school and may be a different kind of example than normal, but as you were walking around, where is that space where this would happen, where the collaboration time would happen? But it is recognized as something the state has to move toward for eligible funding participation as well. And so it's interesting, I thought, that they caught that even as they were, as they were looking at everything else.
Mr. O'Neill, I was going to say, I know, you know, we've been hearing a lot from the community with a lot of feedback and a lot of suggestions they were coming with. And, you know, you do have the occasional, like, there's all this capacity in this school, there's a lot of capacity in this school, but a lot of times, the community doesn't understand is, even though it might say 79%, that doesn't necessarily mean that there is empty classrooms. That means, I mean, all that space is being used one way or another, whether it be for special education, it be for conference room, whether it be for, you know, one-on-ones to do work with a student. So I think that's important for the community to understand too, is just because something might say, well, there's only 79% in this school, that doesn't mean they have, like, empty classrooms boarded up, like, no one's using that space, like, everything gets used.
Sure, and maybe it's a good moment to pause and talk about some of the feedback as a whole, but schools will always find the best uses for space in the best interests of students. And, you know, at a certain level, I guess it would be true, but in general, a principal's never going to tell you there's too much space here. They're going to make good use of that space to best serve the students in their, in their school population. And, you know, then it gets, depending on the school and what programs are there, and we, you've spent time as a Board of Ed over the years looking at special programs relative to redistricting in general. You can have what appears to be on a, on a state-rated capacity chart space, but you don't really have that much space, especially if you have special programs in that particular school, because you need those classrooms, even those, those classrooms on purpose might have fewer students than some other more typical classrooms in a building.
And I would just add to that, that, you know, some of the schools that were built, you know, many years ago are not built to be used the way in which we use schools today. For instance, we have, we provide many more interventions and special services to students today than we used to, and so in a school that doesn't have smaller spaces to pull small groups or one-on-ones with students, you have to take large classrooms and kind of divvy up that space. And so I can say as a previous principal, if you're at about 80% capacity, you're comfortable. You're, you're comfortable. When you get over 80%, you start having trouble finding spaces to do all the things that, that we're required to do for students these days.
And utilization, and we've presented on this over the years, utilization, as you see it on a chart, is a function of, of the Public School Construction Programs Regulations for State Rated Capacity, and it's ultimately what they use as a funding formula. It doesn't tell that, you know, that's not the only way to look at how a school is being utilized.
Exactly.
Staffing, scheduling, all of those things come into play as well, so that's important. And I know that you're getting, I'm sure you're getting feedback, we are at the staff level, I'm sure other elected, other elected officials are as well, and that's great. I mean, I think that's important, I think you would all agree, we want the public to be engaged, we want them to know that this process is happening, that's why you're holding meetings like this. We also hope that they'll take the time to access the report and try to do their best to read through it and understand it, and I get that it's a lot. That's why we're holding a series of work sessions for you, and you're very much closer to the work as we are. So there's a lot to digest, and there's nothing wrong with people trying to, trying to sort their way through it and come up with ideas and suggestions, and I might, I might turn to Mr. Burkhouse, legal counsel, in a minute, and that's normal and natural. And, and it's, it's fair game for people's thoughts and concerns ultimately if this process moves to a certain place where maybe some folks don't agree with, with where, where it winds up. And the, and sort of the standard, I think Mr. O'Neill, who was here last time as legal counsel, indicated that anytime there's a redistricting plan, if there's an appeal under state law, so it's not an option or it's not discretionary, automatically under state law, the State Board of Ed assigns that case to an evidentiary hearing at the Office of Administrative Hearing, so there's a full evidentiary hearing, but also the State Board has upheld many times over the years that, yes, there are absolutely a thousand different ways that you could go about this. And, and, you know, as long as people want to meet and be thoughtful about it, they can come up with additional ways. You could have done this instead of that, absolutely, that's true, and we want to acknowledge that, we understand that. To the extent we can answer the folks who are writing in, we will. Ultimately, your standard under the law doesn't change, which is arbitrary.
Unreasonable or illegal.
And, and so the State Board has held many times, yeah, there was an alternative plan that, that a certain community or maybe a large part of the community preferred, but that doesn't mean your plan was illegal, arbitrary, or unreasonable. And that's, that's both, I think, the good thing about this process, and also that, you know, the challenging part at the end, if it, you know, if it moves forward into a redistricting process. So those questions are fair game, and I know you, we're getting them, I'm sure you're getting them, and the answer to many of them from us might well be, yes, you could do that. We didn't do that for these reasons, and we think those are well-thought-out reasons, but it doesn't mean someone else who's a very reasonable person can't reach another conclusion, and that's okay. You know, that's fine. So I appreciate that question, I wanted to try to fit that in at some point, and it's good.
And like I said, I think it's good to make sure the community understands, like, you know, even though they might say, there's 79% here, and that doesn't mean that there's all this empty space available, you know, I mean, and, and of course, what's the one thing we always hear, kicking the can down the road, you know, but the thing is too, when you, just because it says that, 79%, that doesn't mean that there's all this empty space used. I mean, everything is used, every, and I know when we visit schools, we see all the, the space is utilized, everything is utilized. So I mean, I just want to make sure the community understands that, that, you know, it's, it is going to be a lengthy process, it is a difficult process, but we, we do see that there's, there's no, like, one wing is completely empty of students, everything is used in our school system.
And all the, and we'll come back to those factors again, because we're going to sort of do a little recap quickly on the primary options in the plan, but I think that came out at the first work session. I believe it might have been Board Member Savigny who went to Mr. Hardesty's helpful map, because even when there is some space somewhere more than some, than another school, where kids live and how you would, all of those things matter, and then they interrelate, I think, as Superintendent McCabe pointed out in her remarks last time, sometimes one of those factors has a negative impact on another factor that I might also rank as a high priority. So it's, it's complex and it's complicated, and, and we know that, and so to the extent that it frustrates the, the public, it, we understand that too, and, and it frustrates us as we go through this work. It's just that we've been at it for months, and now, you know, now everyone else is getting a shot to take a look at it and offer their input. Back to the capital discussion, we had some conversation about additions, and we prompted that conversation because two of the three primary options of the, of the committee included some range of capital additions, and then that generated a lot of conversation, and sort of our big picture takeaway from your discussion last time was that you, you absolutely want to be sure as a Board of Ed that you're considering any redistricting in the broadest context of your capital program as possible, whether that's the blueprint having an influence, or whether it's just your, your typical traditional capital program. And so we wanted to spend some time here talking about additions. And much of this applies whether they're additions specifically in the SARC report or whether it's just a project you're talking about. And we'll, we'll always, almost, we're always going to begin as staff by saying, the, the best thing we can do for you to get the kind of detailed information that, that almost always your questions immediately go to, is for you to authorize commissioning a feasibility study. And so for anyone who might be watching, that's just a kind of a pre-development study by architects and engineers of different types to take a look at a specific site, a specific school location, and say, okay, from an architect and engineer standpoint, we can do certain things on this site, and there are other things that maybe it would be more challenging to do on this site, or this particular site would have some restrictions that another site might not have. And, and we're going to cover this in a minute on slides, but you, you teased some of this out last time. Freedom's not a large site, it's a small footprint of land, it's a, a school that's been built successively over years, you were down there today and got to see that site. It, it's not that an addition can't be built there, it just would be very helpful to have a full feasibility study to really be able to answer the kinds of questions that we know you'll always have, and those are great questions, and we would have them too. We have an estimated, estimated cost here, and I want to kind of put some context around that. We, I went, I went back to the last feasibility study you commissioned, which was for East Middle, and it was $60,000-ish, and that was the low bid. So the range of bids even then, did they go up to 100, Bill? They got close, I think.
I think they got close, I'm not sure they were.
So, you know, I feel like there's, you know, there's an inflationary impact since then, the, we have some ability to look at what other counties have commissioned recently and see where the bid market is, but there, there's a grain of salt there, because that also depends on that site, that that county's looking at, the size of the project, all of those things matter. But internally, we've also determined over the last couple of projects that we've undertaken that we feel it's, it's important generally, this doesn't apply only to Freedom or only to Sykesville Middle, that generally, we, we would also like to increase the kind of scope that we, that we're asking for in our feasibility studies to really sort of beef up the civil engineering involved. And so with all of those things in mind, we're estimating about $100,000 per site in this case, $100,000 for Freedom, $100,000 for Sykesville Middle. Ultimately, the bid market determines what that is, as you know, that's, that's just our best attempt at an estimate. But we do think, you know, as I said, in general, we really feel like we should be asking more from a civil engineering standpoint, and on these sites, and especially the Freedom site, that's, that's as true as anywhere. We really would want to know things about, like stormwater, stormwater management and that kind of thing. So that's, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to lead, but that's a crucial piece of, of information that we think you would ultimately want to have to, to the extent you're considering pairing redistricting with a capital project, the capital addition. If you commissioned it soon, and this could happen or not happen, but you could say as early as the, your business meeting, which I guess is next week, a week from tonight, we authorize you to move, Superintendent McCabe, we authorize you to move forward with a feasibility study for one, or the other, or both of these two schools. All that would mean that night is that we're, we're preparing an RFP and sending it out for, to the bid market to get responses, which would then be analyzed and brought back to you at some point in, in the due course for your vote on an award of bids. And we're going to come back to this on a final slide on the capital timeline, but we wanted to put that out here now to say, that's the earliest we could do it, and it, and it is allowable under the capital timeline, and that would get you results. Ray always doesn't like me to commit too much, but in, in the spring of '23, you would have the results of, of those feasibility studies. I think Mr. Kyler asked last time, what about the other smaller additions that are part of the SARC options, a classroom here and a classroom there? We still would always prefer to have a feasibility study, but we think those could be grouped. So depending on how this may move forward in a sequence, we, we could do a feasibility study for Freedom, and then say, we want to look at these other three or four smaller additions as a, as a group and commission that study when it's, when it's appropriate in time. And we mentioned this last time, so it's just sort of a quick little follow-up reminder, we would want to pair or marry the, the blueprint requirements, if we, if we get clarity that we need to move forward with pre-K additions under the blueprint, if possible, we would like to try to accomplish them at the same time as any other addition that you might be considering. It may not, Ray and I were debating this publicly the other night, it may or may not mean less money, but it certainly would mean greater efficiency, coordination, and less disruption on that school involved. So there's, there's good things there, even if it's not necessarily a monetary savings, although it might be. Looking at the two schools, we have kind of the same layout for both Freedom and Sykesville Middle, and we kind of want to keep talking about Sykesville Middle, because I think for a lot of the same reasons we're talking about Freedom, we've been talking about Freedom longer, but now that we're post-pandemic, or hopefully getting, getting post-pandemic, the middle school numbers are now telling us that some of the same considerations that the county might have here relative to adequate public facility ordinances, et cetera, it's as much important at, at Sykesville, or it's becoming as much important at Sykesville as it has been at Freedom for a little bit of time. So we have this same, this same layout for both schools in order. So just some background information on the size of the site, I think that was a specific question last time. You were there today, and your floor plan was kind of color-coded for the series of additions that have taken place at Freedom, but you can see, I'm listed here now. And then we, you had some discussion last time about sort of what I call, we're calling here, capital implications, but maybe I would, I would think of it as sort of the range of additions that you might want to consider and discuss, and so we'll, we'll go back through these. The SARC report had three primary options, two of those options suggested additions at some schools, and Freedom, one of them. Primary option number two, and Mike is going to remind you and every one of the options in a bit, so there'll be a reference point. Primary option two called for a one-classroom addition at Freedom, primary option three called for a two-classroom addition at Freedom. There was some discussion last time about what, what would be sort of the size of an addition at Freedom feasibility study, notwithstanding, but just what would be the size of, of an addition at Freedom that could bring the school to 100% utilization under state-rated capacity? And we gave you an answer, and we went back and, and thought about that answer and feel like we're comfortable with it. We would say six classrooms, six regular classrooms, and then eight, we toyed with nine, but a couple of more, eight for special areas. And you walked through that special area wing today, and I think Principal Smith also had a special in, in one of the relocatables. So, you know, depending on some of, some of the instructional aspect of, of planning six to eight classrooms, if, if the goal was to just say, let's build an addition and get Freedom to 100% utilization, and I'm not saying that that's what you wanted to do, and we're just trying to respond to the discussion last time. And then a sort of a, the concept of an in-between, because there was, we were beginning to get there, we felt like last time in your discussion. So, you know, if we're looking So, you know, if we're looking at what the SARC report's saying and on the other far end is a six to eight classroom addition to bring the school by itself to a hundred percent, what would what might be an interim step in the middle? And an interim step might be, just for the sake of discussion, to get the school to a place where the APFO where it would be acceptable under the adequate public facilities ordinance. And we think two or three classrooms would do that. But as we were understanding your discussion, that's in the context of an interim step with further consideration of redistricting, further consideration of the capital program to follow in time. And so we hope that responds to the discussion you had last time. And if not, we're certainly open to other other discussion, other questions and answers. But but we did sort of want to try to try to offer a response to the kinds of things we thought we heard you discussing or asking last time. The next few slides, for both schools, it's the same when we get to Sykesville as well. There's an aerial view of the site. I'll pause or we can flip back and forth if you if you have any any specific questions. I think being there today is is much more informative than trying to look at it on the screen, but it's it's a small site. It was nine point six acres, I think, and it's contained and, you know, and there might be some site issues that really would would need to be assessed by a by a feasibility study. But there's a there's a look from above.
And John, can I can I ask, so that last picture, that only has the the quad on there, right? It doesn't have the the additional two-classroom portable that was added this year.
Right, correct.
Correct.
Does this point? But you know where it, well.
Right.
If I can point with this or not.
It's right in front of the other one.
Yes.
I guess the kind of.
If this points, I don't know how to point.
It might to.
Nick has it.
So it would be roughly here somewhere, I think.
Right. And that was just a double. That's not a, that's not another quad.
The one that you could see is a quad.
So there's six classrooms outside.
Yes, correct. The one you could see is the quad, the others are doubles, so six classrooms outside now.
Right. And to go back, because I didn't mention that, I'm going the right way. To go back, the six to eight classroom addition would theoretically remove the relocatables. The interim step, the the portables would probably remain because we'd want to see where we are. Well, Ray is also probably shouting, I need swing space for construction and that sort of thing. We don't, we don't want to take away space until we get to where we need to be. But, you know, as Ms. Patagali said, schools will use the space effectively. And so we wouldn't be suggesting pulling the relocatables out as as an interim step.
Alrighty. So there's there's the aerial and then for folks at home, well, this is actually isn't that bad on this screen. It's way better on the screen than it is to my eyes on paper. So I I'm just curious how this would look. I think folks at home probably can also download this if they want to and and blow it up. But there's two slides that just show the floor plan of Freedom. Shows the classrooms and to some extent, you can see what's what's in some of those spaces. And certainly if you're a parent of a student in the school, you would be able to identify grade levels, I think, and and that sort of thing. So we wanted to provide the floor plans just in case you want to you want to have that level of detail of discussion here here this evening. And like I said, we're happy to stop or go back and and forth at any at any time. And I'll try to pick up the pace here a little bit. So as I said, as with Freedom, we we wanted to sort of lay out the case for Sykesville Middle as well. And so this is the same, the same slide sequence you were seeing before for Sykesville. And I'll skip just to the capital implications. The two options in the SARC report that call for additions, one called for a four-classroom addition, one for a five. And for anyone who who may be wondering, that that simply has to do with the with the number of students being moved as part of those redistricting options. And again, we're just repeating, so if you wanted to look at Sykesville in terms of what size addition would would lower the school to a hundred percent of capacity and take care of the relocatables and I'll have to turn to Bill to to know how many relocatables are there, that would be in our estimate, an eight to ten classroom addition. And again, two to three, if if a if a goal was an interim step of lowering utilization so that the APFO restriction would not would not be in place anymore. Do you know the number of relocatables on site?
Two doubles, four.
Four classrooms.
Four, four classrooms, two, two double portables. And then again, the aerial is here and the floor plans are here on the next couple of slides. And for the next slide in your handout, these are probably reversed and I apologize for that, but the slide I want to focus on first is the one titled Annual Capital Timeline. You you may have you may have a slide titled Committee Reminder Committee Priorities. We're just flipping how we how we handle them here because I want to try to finish up the capital discussion while we're still in in the sequence here. So we're sharing this just as an overall reminder of this is your annual process for your capital improvement plan. It it starts, actually probably starts in May when we bring you for discussion your Educational Facilities Master Plan. But it really begins officially in June when you take action to approve your Educational Facilities Master Plan. That's a required document by the state. It goes to the state. The Educational Facilities Master Plan, or as Ray likes to call it, the EFMP, is your is kind of your ten-year planning document. And it informs or it feeds into your CIP or your Capital Improvement Plan. That's your budget request or your funding document for your capital program. You'll actually be seeing a draft of that next Wednesday. Wednesday, the September meeting is when we bring the CIP for discussion. Not much of this is in there and that's okay. You can certainly have this discussion again in a week relative to the concepts of additions. And if you wanted to add something, you could do that now in real time. That's one of the things I wanted to work with staff to make sure I was clear on from the last work session to this one. But you have every ability, every legal ability to revise your your CIP in flight. You don't have to sort of say, we're going to wait for the next cycle to begin. So we'll bring it for discussion. We'll we'll have your discussion and then any edits or revisions or additions you'd like to make, we'll come back to you at your October business meeting for your vote. And then that that CIP, as always, goes to both the state and to the county government for their consideration for funding. The county, as you know, has its historic sessions with their staff, usually around January to start. And and then they work out their their budget for the coming year. The state, there's some preliminary work with the IAC, but ultimately the state CIP is approved and adopted by the General Assembly. So you get your final answer at the close of 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 the General Assembly timeline. So so we put this here as a reminder, but also to clarify some of the conversation you had last time, which, you know, there were some questions, sort of, it seemed like, like, could we do a feasibility study now? Or would that be out of sequence? And the answer is, you can do it now. It would be out of sequence in terms of the traditional process of if if you were starting well in advance from scratch and not kind of adjusting to information in real time. But there's nothing wrong with, or there's nothing stopping you from commissioning a feasibility study as an information tool out of the sequence of of the natural flow of a capital project from start to finish. And we've done that. I think we did that for East. So very recently, this Board of Ed has done that. And at the same time, depending on where you land with this process, if 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 your decision, for instance, ultimately might be we we don't want to abandon this work of the SARC, but we really want to make sure we're considering it completely in relationship to the blueprint and its capital implications. And capital projects on the whole, you know, you're you're you you could also defer this until next year's capital process, starting with the EFMP in May. But you're not limited to that either. You you have the full range of possibilities open to you now. I guess is sort of the point we were hoping to make with with this discussion tonight. So at this moment, we're going to pause the capital discussion, have a review of the three primary options, and then at the end of that, return to just your your general Q and A and and discussion.
So before you pause, let's say we want to do the feasibility study for Sykesville and Freedom and that doesn't affect this timeline. Is there any negative of even though thinking that may delay delay it a year of going ahead and trying to put some of the projects in here this year? They they're they're totally independent of each other, the feasibility study and what we do with this, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And and then it seems like everybody recognizes it's important to kickstart the feasibility study for Freedom and Sykesville. Are the are the ones for the additions a little more simple? Will they take less time? Is there? And it's almost too early, maybe in the process, to identify all of them right now? In other words, it it's logical to to not give that study as much importance.
To to us it is for a couple of reasons, and I'll also defer to staff for their thoughts. But we'd want to be very careful that we don't move forward with something that you don't ultimately approve as part of a redistricting plan, if you do, or as part of your your own independent CIP discussion. It seems pretty clear that there's a need at Freedom and Sykesville. But if you don't agree with that, then that doesn't go forward either. And and by the way, I hope I made this point earlier, Mr. Kyler, but if you commission a feasibility study now, you're still not committed to it until you award the bid. So, you know, you're not out anything at this point. So knowing for sure what the comprehensive plan would be before commissioning studies for those other knowing what the comprehensive plan will be will will define, okay, and that includes additions here, here and here. Otherwise, we'd be a little hesitant to to know what we're commissioning.
And the feasibility studies for Sykesville and Freedom, is there any kind of a drop-dead time on, do they expire at some point in time? It's, I know we said this on East Middle, I think, doing it now, we're we're not, we're going to need it. If if we all think we need to do an addition each of these schools, we're going to need the feasibility study, so why not do it? There's no negative of doing it early, is it?
No, no. It's a good base to have from the get-go. And it's general enough where it'll serve wherever we might go in in terms of an, you know, an actual addition. So it should be useful for the foreseeable future.
And, you know, another thought occurred to me to your original question about the other additions, the smaller projects. I'm I'm sure, I, when I came here to work, we were sort of at the tail end of what we accomplished with Full Day K, but I'm guessing we grouped feasibility studies for those additions.
We did a SCUB study for the ten that we identified that we needed to do additions. We did a one SCUB study for all ten.
So that would be consistent with the process we've, the boards used in the past as well.
Right. And we do that for a number of different types of projects.
And and based on the little bit of time we spent there today, one of my worries is, you know, you've got options of any place from one or two classrooms to six or eight. And the feasibility study may say, wow, the most you can do is four.
Correct.
And that'll help us decide on the other ones, maybe.
It may say things like that. It may say, if you want to do an addition of X size, you're going to spend a lot of money because of constraints of the site that you'll need to do certain things with stormwater or other other site considerations. So, yeah, it should give us all of, you know, that full range of information.
Okay, thanks.
And like I said, we'll come back to kind of discuss all of this at the end, but are there other specific capital process, capital timeline, blueprint questions?
The smaller projects, what page is that on? I mean, I I understand the Freedom and Sykesville, but the other smaller projects that we're talking about.
Can either of you or any of the three of you cite the pa, the primary option pages where it'll reference the the?
Because I imagine they're Carrolltown and Aldersburg.
I believe we're talking about the the one-classroom additions.
Primary options two and three.
So, yeah, it's at five elementary, primary option two.
So it's like Carrolltown, Aldersburg, Linton Springs.
Correct.
Okay.
So Commissioner for Primary Option Two, it looks like page forty of the report.
Okay, then.
And then.
And Piney.
Right. Primary option three is fifty-seven.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so, I mean, it's also for those that are, you know, paying attention to this specific. You know, if we're looking at feasibility study, major feasibility studies for what you're discussing is Freedom and Sykesville Middle, you're also making a consideration for feasibility studies, maybe not major, but minor to Linton Springs, Carrolltown, Piney Elementary, Aldersburg and
Mount Airy.
No, no.
On page fifty-seven?
Linton Springs, Piney's. Okay, that's on forty, so. Carrolltown, Aldersburg, Freedom, Linton Springs and Piney Ridge. No, but Freedom's a major. So I think there's only four on the one option.
And then back on fifty-six, fifty-seven.
It adds, it adds, okay.
And the size of these additions are again tied to the redistricting. So I think the SCUB study, that we're feasibility study is kind of separate. But the these additions, again, are especially on Primary Option Two, would be coordinated with the pre-K additions that are already in our facility master plan, which we're already going to be looking to do some type of study most likely anyway. So we would coordinate the work. We wouldn't do two studies for Carrolltown for, we wouldn't do a pre-K study and a study to look at this addition. We would do one that looks at kind of them together. So that's that's part of the reason I think it's kind of somewhat separate than than Sykesville and.
Because where I'm also going to, I appreciate that, is answering some of these frequently asked questions that we all received. You know, because there's a lot of anxiety, angst out there, you know, moving communities from one place to another. And people are making a lot of assumptions that we're going to, we, the county, is going to jump the gun in making these changes. And, you know, I think from the discussion that I'm hearing and listening to is, that's absolutely not the case. The first steps, like Kenny, you said, is feasibility, say, get that in place first. Keep moving forward and then maybe at that point, make those wise decisions on how and when and where to make changes. But nothing is changing today.
Correct.
So that's.
And I think Mr. Kane's comment was pretty valid on to what Mr. O'Neal said earlier on waiting to try to get more information on blueprint. Or we could do a feasibility study twice for a single school because we weren't quite prepared.
Right, correct.
So we want to avoid that also. So, yes, I think, and I know people were even anxious about more more public comments today, which which, again, I'll do a commercial on that. We look at the emails and and two or three people making a public comment at a meeting probably doesn't get as much attention as these emails that all of us really look like and respond to and and do stuff. So so, yes, we want the public comment, but we're not making a decision tonight to start moving kids.
No.
You know, and and people are anxious.
Absolutely. And there was a lot of really good ideas and thoughts and comments that came forth from texts and phone calls and emails. I mean, I really truly appreciate it. And some of it was just further clarification.
Correct.
And we'll get into that about how using funds and and the timeline and all that, so, okay.
And there's there's a great points and we collect them too as staff. So should the Board of Ed move the redistricting process forward? I think tentatively there, the hearing is still on the calendar for the twenty-first. There'd be a public hearing. We will collect all of those emails and everything that everyone says. And as staff and committee, we we will, we will plow through that. And sometimes the answer might be, yes, you absolutely could do what you're suggesting, and we did look at that. But we we went with this this concept instead for these reasons. Or sometimes it might be, that's an I, that's a, that's a nice idea, but we really couldn't do that because of X, Y, Z. Or sometimes the reason, you know, might be, we didn't think of that option or that that part of things. We can, we can take a look at that and see if that would change the report in some way. Any changes that the committee might want to come up with or say, you know, maybe we should reconsider a few things, those go then to Superintendent McKay before she would bring a final recommendation to you. And 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 in the quickest possible timeline, if the Board of Ed were to approve a redistricting plan in this fall, the earliest it could happen would be the next school year. But they but they wouldn't have to approve changes effective with the next school year. They have the full authority to approve changes whenever they want to, just like they have the full authority to not approve any changes. But so much of your conversation last time was about, let's make sure we're being comprehensive about this whole thing. And we thought that, you know, those are valid points. We formed a redistricting committee and they and they did their work well. But but that added a whole nother element or or a much broader context to it. And so we're trying to marry those things tonight so that you can make the best possible decisions you can.
And like it or not, there's an issue in the southern part of the county on overcrowding in some of the schools and something has to happen. And we're trying to look at additions, moving and the whole. And we're trying to look at additions, moving, and the whole nine yards. But it would be naive to think we're gonna say, oh, let's not do anything. I don't think that's a possibility.
And capital projects, you know, since we're still on capital, you know, I'm getting a lot of, um, comments regarding impact fees, you know? And just to be very clear, because impact fees are, are a complex issue. We receive impact fees for schools and parks at this time. We are receiving $0 in impact fees because we have no, um, capital projects to implement with impact fees. Impact fees are used for the entire county, not for the Freedom area or Aldersburg by itself. We've got to look at the entire county and capacity when we use impact fees. But that's been a, a question being asked. You know, why not use, and impact fees are only for new houses that are being built in the area. But that's the story about impact fees. Well, I'll get more information, but that's kinda like the, the bottom line of it. Another one is, why not just, county buy a piece of property and build, you know? It's because it's not our property, it's private property. And, you know, it's property owners' rights to sell their property appropriately. And that's why the county doesn't just go out and buy property. So that's another capital issue down in the South that's happening, so just wanna be clear on that.
Absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts here.
There are a lot of moving parts. But I, but, but again, just to reiterate, I really appreciate the input from those emails. I mean, they mean a lot. And, uh, you know, we all see, like you say, Kenny, the problem in front of us. And we have to be a creative solution, you know, which is gonna be a combination of capital and processes to get us there. But, yeah.
And I do wanna reiterate too, I think a lot of things, why did you wait so long? You know, we had this in play to do, and we had formed the committee, everything was being looked at, and then COVID happened. So everything was put on pause, thanks COVID, um, for that. But we also gave a direction to, as soon as we could, start the committee back up and get everything worked out. So it, it wasn't that the board ignored it, you know, direction was to do everything. Um, cause that's some of the things I had been hearing too, is why did you wait so long? We were addressing it, but because of COVID, we had to take a pause, and that's the unfortunate part.
Okay, well, we're not going to abandon the capital conversation for good. We're just gonna, no, it's okay, we, we can come back to all of this. We're just gonna step through the, um, the committee's report, particularly the three primary options. This, so this slide and the next few slides through each option, including the maps, are identical to what you saw last Wednesday, we're, we're simply repeating them. And because you saw them last Wednesday, and because Ms. McCabe, I think, made some very salient points on this particular slide, I'm not gonna take your time to reread them. But these were the, uh, the, the priorities that the committee had to sift through and try to, and try to wrangle with and figure out how each impacted the other, that led them to their three primary options that they recommended. And Mr. Hardisty, who, who presented those three primary options last time, is going to do a quick reminder.
But one question before that, and, um, the special programs, the student ride time, and, and really some of the other factors, they're all being evaluated as the committee worked, as it went on. Let's say tonight, and I'll, I'll make up one, we love option D, we wanna go forward with that. That, that doesn't mean, if, if option D says we're gonna move 1,200 students, it may end up being 900, it may end up being 1,250. Bus routes will be reevaluated, all this stuff will be tweaked all throughout the process until it ends.
I believe Mr. Hardisty was being very careful to say these are numbers today, which would be approximate.
Yeah, he wouldn't commit.
No, they'll be, they'll be different five years from now, or whenever.
Yeah, okay.
So yes, and also, uh, you know, to, to follow that process out again, i- if, if you move just redistricting forward, there'd be a, a public hearing, there'd be follow-up work by the committee, there'd be a recommendation from the superintendent, and there'd be public hearing on that recommendation from the superintendent before you vote on it.
Yeah.
And then you, you, I can't stress this enough, you have complete and utter authority as a Board of Ed to approve that plan as recommended. Portions of that plan, uh, y- you can put your own specific touches on that. And you set the timeline, whether that's for the following school year or two school years out. You also, as Board of Ed, have full authority to determine, um, the common questions that follow, like, what about grandfathering? Um, you, you know, do, do students at every grade level move, or can some not move? Uh, and you also, as a Board of Ed, control your policy on out of district, which to some extent can influence which, which students, uh, you know, s, move or, or where they end up at a, at a particular school. So the angst is there, and, and, and I think in general, that's a good thing because it means there's an awareness and, and an interest. But it's far from, uh, you know, tomorrow morning you wake up and you find out you're at a different school, yeah. So Ms., I'm gonna try to click for Mr. Hardisty, so I'll try to be in sync with him here.
That's right, thank you. So just a quick recap of, of what was, uh, the overview of, at the last work session. Uh, the committee established four basic goals based upon utilization percentages. Goal one was to meet the approaching inadequate standard in board policy of 105% utilization for elementary and 110% for middle and high school. Goal two is to, uh, reach 100% utilization in all schools in the southern area. And goal three was, um, also to approach 100%, but in certain cases, some schools might be slightly above 100%. And so with the idea of moving fewer students, we would accept a few schools that might be at 102 or 103%. Um, and goal four was to get to the 95% utilization. Among those four goals, there were seven different options. Um, and what the committee did then was to vote on their top three of those seven options. And that's what we're presenting and presented last week. Goal two, option one, 100% utilization with clean feeders. Goal two, option three, which again is 100% utilization with clean feeders, but also includes capital additions. And then goal four, option two, which is the 95% utilization with clean feeders and capital improvements.
And Mike, those, to Commissioner Rothstein's question, for anyone who wants to pull the report and, and look at this together, those, uh, capital additions are spelled out on page 40 for option, primary option two, and page 57 for primary option three of the full SARC report.
So primary option one, 100% utilization with clean feeders, improves the elementary me, uh, middle feeder pattern with approximately, uh, there's 10% of Winfield's current population, um, that, um, would, would go to Mount Airy Elementary, Pars Ridge, as opposed to going to, um, well, it, it improves the feeder pattern for, for the Winfield Elementary School. It's 100% of the students would be there. There are 18 schools that would be impacted in, in this option. Um, it's the largest number, highest number of students that would be impacted. Uh, again, based on current students, would be 1,095, um, students that are currently geocoded as of the September enrollment. Uh, that number is obviously just the, just the ballpark for what it might be in 2026. Um, there would be a domino effect in, involving multiple schools. Uh, and this, this option does affect schools outside of the southern region. So there would be students moving into the Mechanicsville District from Freedom, uh, from Aldersburg. And, um, there would also be students moving from Winfield into Robert Moten. So those students would then be in a Westminster area feeder involving West Middle and Westminster High School. Uh, this option does not involve any capital projects. Um, it would involve school time changes for about 60% of the students moving. As we know, there, there are certain, uh, schools that, that operate on different transportation tiers for transportation efficiency. So Aldersburg Elementary School, for instance, is on our first tier with a 7:45 start time. And we have other elementaries in the southern area that, that are on the third tier with a 9:30, 9 o'clock to 9:30 start time. So students moving from a tier one to a tier two school are gonna have significant time changes, uh, for families. Um, and there would be, anytime we're moving boundaries and students, there're going to be bus route changes necessary. Based upon our initial look, we did not feel that there would be any need for additional buses, but there would be significant bus route changes necessary. Uh, this is a map showing the areas, the areas shaded would be the students that live in those regions that would be moving. Um, and this is the middle school map. There are detailed maps in the full report that get down to the very details of those regions. And this is the elementary map, again, for the shaded areas being, students residing in those areas would be the students recommended for moving, uh, to a new school with new school boundaries. Primary option two is 100% utilization with capital improvements. Um, again, it improves the feeder pattern for Winfield, um, and corrects a, the, uh, going to Sykesville Middle. Uh, there was a small percentage of students going to Sykesville Middle from Winfield that would now go, uh, to Mount Airy Middle. This is, uh, this is involving a smaller number of students, nearly 700 students in 15 schools. Uh, it's a minor domino effect. Um, and there are classroom, and we mentioned the capital improvements. Uh, there are five elementaries, Carrolltown, Aldersburg, Freedom, Linton Springs, Piney Ridge Elementary involved for additions, and then the Sykesville Middle, um, in addition. It, this improves the number of students that, uh, have school time changes. We estimate about 30% of those students moving. And again, these are the boundaries identified. You can see there are fewer boundaries, fewer students identified for moving at the middle school level with this option. And the same for the elementary, uh, boundaries. Moving to primary option three, uh, which gets us to the 95% utilization with capital improvements. Uh, this obviously improves the overall capacity of southern area schools, uh, to get us to that 95% utilization. Uh, 925 students in 16 schools impacted, again, improves the overall feeder pattern. Capital improvements are at Mount Airy Middle and Sykesville Middle, so there's two middle schools involved here. And then three elementaries, Carrolltown, French, uh, Freedom, sorry, and Piney Ridge. Small domino effect, certainly some longer bus rides, uh, cause again, this will involve Westminster area feeder pattern. Uh, the Westminster area feeder pattern for certain schools moving into that, those schools, Mechanicsville and Robert Moten. And about a third of the students would have, uh, school time changes. And again, here are the boundaries for students moving. It's a little more significant than we saw under option two, and again, for the elementaries.
So that's, um, you know, that brings us to where we hopefully have done a, an okay job. We hope of laying out some of the capital processes, timelines, considerations, refreshing everyone's memory on the three primary options from the SARC report, and then bringing you back to, um, these are actually the same discussion bullets from last time. But you, you certainly, uh, last time and, and earlier this evening have added some context and background to some of these, especially the, the second bullet there. So we can flash back and forth. But from Superintendent McCabe's introduction, it brings us to a place now with the full, uh, with everything that's, that's occurred thus far, um, kind of asking you for consensus, not just on the options in the plan, but now that you've added this comprehensive look at capital, um, capital projects as part of it, where does that leave you in terms of wanting to move processes? And so you could, just like with a redistricting plan, you could define these different ways and lay these out different ways. But basically, the question is, where are you in terms of the process? Because you have a redistricting process and timeline in your policy and regs, and you have capital timelines. And we've talked about how those can be adjusted. Um, you could move redistricting forward on its own without that capital information, but that capital information seems to be becoming very important to your thoughts and discussions. So do you want to move any of those things forward and hold redistricting? Do you not? Or, you know, how, how, how would you direct us to work these out, Mrs. Herbert?
Well, I'm gonna be short and sweet, I'll tell you that right now. Considering everything, um, that was presented, now is not the time to go forward with redistricting. And this is my own personal feeling, and looking through everything that we have done so far. And my reasoning is, number one, three, four years ago, we did not have this blueprint. We were not told that we need to do all these pre-K rooms. Now, we are going to be on a 60/40 teaching time. 60% in the classroom, 40% professional. Are they gonna go out in their cars and sit and, and do their professional? I mean, we are running out of spaces, and we need to look all over the county for this, not just elementary. We need to look at this as a county-wide blueprint. This has been thrown in after we got to the redistricting. Families moved here for a specific reason. They moved to these areas because they wanted to go to those schools. And we have heard that over and over and over again for our, from our emails. The other thing we've heard is, and I have to agree with this wholeheartedly, our kids, our students should be back to normalcy. I have heard that parents, I don't wanna send my kids to Westminster, their friends are in that area. So I, I, I think we need to slow this down, look at this in a holistic situation, and, um, look at the bus routes, time changes. I can tell you what happened right in our backyard, again, and I will repeat it. Spring Garden started early, Hampstead started late, what did the parents do? Oh, they're, they're going to Hampstead for a later time now and balanced it out. And this is just a, another big disruption. I know we need to do something. Freedom is, they're overcrowding, and it's, and there's gonna be more of it. But I think we need to do the feasibility study. That is, that is the first thing we should be doing. But I, we have too many different spokes in the wheel right now that we did not have three years ago with, with this blueprint. And I was talking to the, the committee in the back, and I am very sorry that they are being treated unfairly due to emails and phone calls. I, I, they, that is a volunteer job. They were asked to do that, and I am so sorry that some of you are getting bombarded with nasty, uh, emails and phone calls. That is not what this world's supposed to be. They were on a committee, they volunteered, and to the bottom of my heart, I am so sorry that this has happened to you. It's happened to us for the last couple of years, we all have alligator skin. But that's not fair to you all on that committee at all, and I'm very sorry for that. Um, and I gotta see what the commissioners need to address with the county adequate public facilities ordinance. And I know, uh, Commissioner, right here to my side, uh, said that they were gonna look at that. So these are my reasonings that I'm very concerned about right now. It's not the same thing that we were looking at three to four years ago about redistricting. And I don't want us to be, uh, wasteful money, spending money where we need to really do more comprehensive look. How many extra mo, rooms do we need for pre-K all over the county? How many, you know, and with this 60/40, that is really gonna be a big change. So that's it. You could all yell at me, scream at me, but I'm just trying to be thoughtful and common sense and not throw money away after money away. And I, you know, I don't think we need to proceed with the public hearing on the September 21st. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Herbert. You know, you, you, a couple of things in follow-up. You brought up the school time changes, and Mike had mentioned that both times. We had, I hadn't really discussed that much. That's, you know, that's not a factor under the law that necessarily gets considered. It's not a factor necessarily that gets considered in your policy. But I don't want folks to think that we're not aware that that impacts their life dramatically. And the choice, you, you referred to some of the changes in Hampstead earlier. That, that choice sometimes might come down just to daycare, if I already have a daycare. So we do know that, we do know that we're impacting your life in a lot of different ways beyond what's scripted into the law or policy. So I appreciate you bringing that out. And I talked a bit earlier, and I, and I still stand by it, that it's great when, when the citizens are engaged and involved in reading and sending us emails, and, and kinda the unfortunate side of that for some, sometimes is that can get very negative. And, um, you know. And, you know, we don't like it, but but it's our job.
And I am sorry for them to have that. That that's, it's not necessary.
But they're not.
They were, they were volunteers and they're helping.
Right.
We wanted to do this job and we were elected.
And that's unfortunate because we want parent representatives. We want parents involved in the planning.
Absolutely.
But they sometimes pay a price for that when, for some folks, it's hard to not make
And I just wanted to say, I was very, I'm still very sorry for that.
Well said.
I really am. It's unnecessary. It really is. We need our volunteers.
Right.
Did you want to go, Dr. Dorsey? Might as well just go down the line.
Okay. Well, I certainly agree with a lot that Mrs. Herbert has shared. And to me, there certainly are a lot of moving parts. So I think our time would be wisely spent trying to look at the whole situation comprehensively. We've got a lot of questions out there. I think the feasibility study seems to be, you know, the next best, the next best step for us to take because I think that can answer some of the questions that we certainly have. And again, we can't lose sight of the capital projects or what the blueprint is requiring of us in addition to the pre-K space, as we're saying, the space for teachers with their PD part of their days now. But I think the bottom line for me as far as saying, let's wait a while as far as getting the feasibility study done and getting answers to those questions. I think the thing that rings out to to me loud and clear is hearing the parents just really share that they're really looking for some normalcy. And whenever we throw redistricting out, you know, it creates a lot of anxiety, a lot of tension. You know, we have people who certainly are saying, you know, they were really just wanting a normal, regular school year, you know, without thinking about, okay, well, now our area is going to have to leave the Sykesville area possibly and and be redistricted to an area that we didn't buy a home in. So again, I would just like to alleviate some of the anxiety and some of the concern. And I think we can get a lot more done by taking it slowly, getting the answers to the questions that we need through the feasibility study and assuring the parents that, you know, we do want to get these answers and to to try to have as normal a year as possible as we move forward. So again, not neglecting, you know, looking at the the situation or the problem and trying to see how we can resolve it. We're not doing that at all. We're just buying some time, which is needed to answer some of the questions, you know, that we still have. I mean, we need to have a real comprehensive look at moving forward with the capital projects and blueprint, et cetera. So again, I concur with Mrs. Herbert that, you know, now is not the time to to jump into redistricting. Let's take it slow and and be wise and gather our facts as we go along. And certainly can't thank the committee, certainly for their hard work, that they've gotten together and done for us. And I know they've put in a lot of time, as you all have, as far as the staff. I have been or involved with redistricting in the past and it just takes a lot. So you all have, you know, certainly done some due diligence as far as seeking some answers and trying to look at various options and various ways that the options will impact the students. So, you know, you you've done a great job, I think, in in looking at that for us. But let's move forward and and see what we can do as far as our capital projects are concerned, especially in light with Freedom and Sykesville.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to echo Mrs. Herbert and Dr. Dorsey's words. You know, a couple of us were were part of a process a couple of years ago and, you know, I I think we're we're reading the same things we had said. It affects the students. It affects the rec councils. It affects traffic. It affects families' times, neighborhoods. You know, you move to a specific neighborhood for a school. So we completely understand that and and I I completely understand that. I do want to thank the parents that volunteered. You guys, it it's, it is thankless. The you guys, you know, you offered your time to look at this. And as Ms. Herbert said, there's, no one should be contacting you, harassing you, making any type of comments to you. You gave up your own time to do this and it's very difficult, you know. Your own families were affected by doing this. You know, it wasn't like, you know, you're moving a neighborhood so your kid didn't get affected. Your kids are affected. And, you know, I I can't thank you guys enough for that, but it is not right that you are being, you know, harassed regarding that. It's not right at all. You know, I I do agree, we should not be rushing this process of the feasibility study.
Absolutely. You know, let's get that taken care of. Let's see what we can do. Can we do two stories at Freedom? You know, can we build an addition with two floors? You know, same with Sykesville, you know, how how can we do that? How can we make more of a parking lot to make the the parking spaces a little bit bigger for when they have events and when they have activities? So all those things do need to be looked at, you know. Yes, we we want to keep our communities together. You know, school is the hub for the community. You know, it's where all the activities are and, you know, everybody comes together. And if there's something that happens, that school community is very close knit and they come together and they help everybody out, families, you know, siblings. So I think, you know, we are very mindful of that and we understand that, how people are feeling that. But yeah, let's, let's go ahead and do the feasibility study. And I.
I agree, Ms. Herbert. I don't think we need to do the public hearing. This is how we, you know, we all agree on this.
Okay, I'm someplace between you guys and and what we're doing. If we would have just said, let's go with option whatever, not done the feasibility study, not hold for the blueprint, this could have been implemented 2023, correct?
Correct, it could have been.
I think, I think we need to look at, do the feasibility study, wait till, I think it was May or whatever, for blueprint. I I'm not sure we don't need to look at which option this committee came up with that we like best and try to move forward. I don't, I don't want to waste time, but I think if we don't do anything, we're wasting time. Yes, someday we need to look at the rest of the county and and do comprehensive redistricting. I don't think now's the time. I think the problem is in the Freedom and Sykesville area, and I think we need to address the problem. Now, if we do, the best case now is this would be implemented 2024. So I understand what your ladies are saying, but these kids are going to have, hopefully, a normal year this year and another one next year before this would happen. If we don't start the process, it could be later than that. I think we're going to push the the board into almost a panic situation if we don't watch it. I think, and and again, I think, if I understand the process, we could pick an option. We could have the public hearing September 21st and based on those comments or the feasibility study or the blueprint plan, we could always say, well, we don't like that, that pick anymore. We we need one of the other options. I I think we have to, we have to make a decision and we have to keep moving forward. I think it would have been very foolish to not worry about the capital projects and try to implement it in one calendar year. But if we start out planning that it's in two calendar years and the process slips, which processes tend to do, it might be three. I don't think we want to push this down the road any further than that. And do you mind if we keep going and then?
I just want to make one clarification. When I was talking about comprehensive, I was talking about the buildings and the and the additions. That's what I wasn't talking about. I just wanted to clarify that because I didn't want anybody to be confused.
Oh, I know. We got, we got pre-Ks, we got all that.
Yes, that's what I want to look at all over the county for, look at all the elementary schools. Where we are with with the new, with the additions and also with the 60-40 split of teaching time. We we've got to look at that.
And I think we've got time. If we get this real rolling, we still got time to do that while we're doing this, I hope. But that, so I'm like, I think we need to make a decision and get moving, whether or not we need to do a public hearing September 21st or in October. I don't know that I care. Maybe the one the feasibility study allows more time for that. But I think people are very anxious to have public input and we need to give them that opportunity sooner rather than later.
Just a couple of thoughts in response to some of the, some of the ideas you laid out there, Mr. Kyler, and not meant to be argumentative at all. I I agree with the timelines as you define them. I I think one question could become, you know, another decision the Board of Ed is going to have to make at the right time is, does the redistricting precede the the capital projects? Or do we try to see if it could be incrementally implemented along with capital projects? And so that could adjust the the timeline as you laid it out. And then this isn't meant to be sort of refuting what you said, but just to kind of add context for the, you know, Commissioner Rustine said, let's make sure everybody's aware of what could happen here and when. You certainly can go to hearing on any of the options or I guess all, but that would be very challenging. Get the feedback. I guess the the thing I want to make sure I say, and and I think I'm clear and I think, I hope Mr. Burke, well, Mr. Burkhouse should agree or not with what I'm about to say.
He'll let you know.
If if the feasibility studies informed a different capital outcome than what's in this report, all of that's going to have to go out for hearing again someday. So it doesn't mean this hearing couldn't happen or this this hearing wouldn't have value, but the public should understand if it changes significantly, it would all happen again on that new timeline, presumably next year.
Originally, if we, if we still were looking for 2023, there were a few opportunities at least for public to either add a regular meeting or add a public hearing. And and again, I think, who knows? Maybe those opportunities double between now and 2024 because that changes or that changes. But yeah, I think, and and I recognize, I I worry about the money and the feasibility studies were saying, isn't, isn't money wasted? It's money well spent because sooner or later we had to do it. So so let's get that input into this process. Having a public hearing or a town hall isn't free and obviously takes all of our time, but I think it, that's minimal money and money well spent is is my opinion here.
To to that point, you made another great point there. Public participation, I put the slide back up for the annual capital timeline. When you, when the master plan, facilities master plan comes to you in May, May's not on here, but that's when it comes to you for discussion, there's then at least 30 days of public comment. This timeline, incorporating this, the capital additions more comprehensively with the redistricting opens up many more opportunities for public participation because there's public participation between discussion of the EFMP to adoption of the EFMP and then again, from discussion of your CIP until adoption of your CIP. So the, I thought you made a really good point. I didn't want it to not be, not be noted for the record.
And one of my worries is like when I hear some kids might go to Mount Airy, some kids might go to Robert Moten Westminster, I'm hoping even if we picked one of the three options, again, that could be tweaked based on bus routes and and whether or not you can do two classrooms or four classrooms addition. All that's going to get tweaked, I think, and hopefully in the right way. But I know when you look at this, it's like, wow. But then I also played with the map a little bit while we're sitting here. Carroll County is not so huge that that I'm not sure what it impacts a bus run, but, you know, we're on, we're not all that far apart. You know, I argue that with the mindset that everything has to start out in Westminster. You know, it's, if if Francis Guy Key had something before Westminster did, you can get there in 30 minutes. You know, it's not, we're not, we're not hours apart. But but hopefully that, I I just, I just think we need to get the process moving so we can make decisions and and we're not doing anything final tonight or or next Wednesday in any of this process. I've talked too much.
But I think we do need to make a decision about the public hearing now to to see what's going to happen there. But you brought up a good point about the public hearing because if we're going to have the CIP submitted to us next week, it might not be a bad idea to have the the public hearing to begin with.
Yeah.
But we'd have to have an option.
Donna, it's your turn.
Now, and I agree with various points that that all of you have made. I just kind of want to go through with my, with my thought process. I'm okay with moving forward with the with the feasibility study. I I'm convinced that it should absolutely be done on Freedom, not completely convinced about Sykesville yet, but more to come on that. Like, and I agree with you, Kenny, about we need to keep the process moving, right? Like, we're not saying that, okay, we're we're drawing a line saying we're not doing anything moving forward. Like, I think that it needs to keep moving. I think the problem that we're having right now, though, is the pace with which we were moving forward and the community is having a big issue with that, right? Like, it looks like we're racing to a solution to say, we're going to get something in place by, you know, September, the beginning of next school year, which has people up in arms in the community and rightly so, right? Like, we're, we're, we're just coming off of, you know, COVID. This is hopefully the, you know, a normal school year for everyone. But like, so we've just started what we hope is a normal school year and autumn, just throwing people right back into a frenzy about, you know, potentially my kids moving. And, you know, we haven't even figured out all the stuff with recovery learning and all the social emotional learning and issues and and, you know, socialization issues that kids had during COVID. And now all of a sudden, we're piling on and saying, okay, well, before we fix all of that and, you know, give everybody a chance to recover, we're now going to talk about potentially moving your kids to to a new school, like, and into a different community. And I just think that the timing of this is horrendous. I I understand the need for it and I understand the longer term need for it. So I think that we need to keep the process moving, but we need to give the community the understanding of this is not going to happen. We're not racing to this to have it in place by September of next year, right? But there's, there's more information for us to figure out. We do need to look at this more comprehensively. Mrs. Herbert, to your point, you know, the, I think the the blueprint has added a completely new level of complexity to all of this. We've got the pre-K implications. We've got the planning time implications on space. We've even got a new way of thinking about the space in the elementary schools. Like, you'll see on the plan for Freedom, you know, there's a computer lab classroom. And I think as we're thinking about the blueprint and and the way COVID has changed the world, like, is that the the best use? Is a computer lab the best use of the space now that we've moved to, you know, a one-on-one or one-to-one ratio for computers? So I think that we need to think about all of that holistically from the blueprint. Are our class sizes going to change because of all the planning time and additional staff that we might need to hire? And where does that additional staff go? And where does all this planning time happen in addition to the pre-K and 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 everything else? Like, so we need that comprehensive look because if we make a move now that's not the right move, then that would be money wasted. But I think if we do a feasibility study, at least at Freedom, I, so two out of the three options that were presented to us by the committee had an addition being built at Freedom, right? So size to be determined, but I think we need that feasibility study to say, okay, is it even doable, right, for a reasonable cost with with the space limitations and with the stormwater management and and all of those other issues? I think that it would not, that that $100,000, if that's what it turns out to be, would not be money wasted because it helps us answer a big unknown question at the moment of what truly is feasible at Freedom. So I think that we need to slow it down, like, give the community the the comfort level that, okay, we're not doing this to race to a decision to impact you guys like in, you know, less than one school year, right? But keep moving down the path, down the critical path of this is the next big question that we need to answer. And that means doing the feasibility study, getting the additional blueprint information as of May to understand how that will impact as well. And we also need to talk with the commissioners, right? Like, we need to understand what the appetite is for capital improvement projects and how that all fits in, right? The last thing we want to do is go down a path and then the commissioners with the new board that's coming in say, we're not going to fund that. new board that's coming in say, we're not going to fund that, you know, because that puts us back a step as well. So I think we need to get, and understand how the growth in various areas of the county are potentially going to impact it. And I also think that our enrollment projections haven't necessarily stabilized yet. You know, we saw a lot of exodus to private schools during COVID because of public schools being closed. We got a lot of them back when we opened up quicker than several other counties in the state, but there could be more coming back. Or there could be more going the other way, depending on how people feel about the blueprint and how that's playing out, and, you know, the state health framework, and lots of moving parts, right? Like, I don't know that those enrollment projections have completely stabilized yet with all of those various impacts. So if we can continue to make progress, but not at a breakneck pace that is causing a lot of angst and frenzy on the community's part. So from that perspective, I don't think that we necessarily need to hold the hearing on the 21st. I think that we should absolutely keep the process moving. But to your point, where depending on what the feasibility study tells us, Mr. O'Neill, we would probably have to circle back and rehold public hearings anyway.
You absolutely will. There's no doubt about that.
Right.
And if you may.
Please do.
And if we were to go to hearing on the 21st, so, let me, so usually for a work session, the board doesn't vote, and I'm not sure legally, you're not in a business meeting, so I don't even know that you could vote. Normally, we look for guidance through discussion on important issues, consensus. So, sitting here, listening, trying to distill everything each of you said, I feel like, I'm on a limb here, but, and I'm looking at my boss, I feel like there's clear consensus to bring an action item to commission a feasibility study at the next possible date, which would be next, this coming Wednesday. So we'll do that. And I think, maybe not each of you is in the same place on what feasibility study. I think we would bring that action item for both schools. You could discuss it and vote on one or the other or both. And again, all you would be doing is authorizing us to scope it out and send it to bid. You're not approving it yet or funding it yet. A little less clarity of consensus on where to go in terms of the redistricting process. And so, in light of that, I just wanted to add one other thing or make one other statement. If we were to move to hearing, you know, just for me, and I get that, you know, I'm not voting anybody here, I feel like we would need to be very, and I'm worried it would be challenging, but we would need to be as clear as possible with the community to say there's a likelihood this could be different later, but we're doing this to gather your feedback now at this moment in time. In other words, to quell that, to whatever extent we could, to calm that anxiety, to, you know, we're doing this for a reason. We want to continue a process, and we are interested in your feedback. But this won't be the final, you see what I'm getting at?
I see what you're getting at. Yeah, and I feel like if we, we do need to keep the process moving, right? Because something will eventually need to be done, right? Like, within the five-year projection, there's an issue that needs to be addressed. Are we, but I think if we do this comprehensively and we do it thoughtfully, we can also consider, you know, grandfathering options. We can consider out-of-district options that alleviates the stress on the community, like, with the options that are being presented to them. And so, I'd love to put, to make more progress on all of those pieces before actually having a public hearing. Because I think having the public hearing kind of sets the stage of, we're moving forward, right, like, immediately.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, I'd like to make a point, and then still your time. When we said do the feasibility studies, we took 2023 off the table.
Yes.
That's impossible now, so there's no way we're rushing. My worry is, when do we lose even the possibility of 2024? And I think, and we still don't need to have a public hearing this month, but, and then to the feasibility studies, one of the things that shocked me, maybe I should have known, Sykesville is probably more overcrowded and for longer than Freedom, and both of them are in both the second and third option. So, and we're not losing anything by doing both feasibility studies now. I just, I hate this, I understand what you're saying, but I hate to see us do anything that now we're already at 2025. I think that we don't want to lose 2024. Now, that, we got a lot of time to vote between now and then, so it doesn't mean it's going to happen in 2024, but I don't think we want to risk the possibility that it could.
So, to address your timeline question, I think you're absolutely right. You're now beyond next year. You're up to '24, and this is all hypothetical, or theoretical, or however you want to view it. But if you commission, let's just confine it to Freedom for the sake of this point. We do the feasibility study, it reveals what it reveals, and the Board of Ed says, okay, now we have this information, and please, anyone who would watch this, this is just a hypothetical discussion. This doesn't, this is nothing real about this. With this additional information, we want to do a four-classroom addition, two for pre-K and two for another. You would put that in your master plan in May and June. You would then, the master plan would feed into your capital request in the fall, and then that's going to the commissioners and to the state. It doesn't stop you, though, from when you make that decision in May or June with the facilities master plan, to say to the SARC or a new SARC or staff, if you want, it doesn't, you know, whoever you assign. We now are committed to this addition. Look at your work. You've laid a strong base on, look at that work relative to this project we're requesting to move forward, and bring us a plan in the same timeline we're sitting in now. So I guess what I'm saying, Mr. Kyler, that may be clumsy, that may not be, you know, something that you all are agreeable with, but I don't know that it kicks you a second year out necessarily. There is the possibility that it could all be married up and both parts looked at in sequence next year. And then, Mrs. Sebigni, I know you still may have other thoughts, the kind of flip side of what I just said about being very clear at a hearing that this is unlikely, it's almost impossible this is going to go forward, but we're still having this hearing. On the other side of that, I think if there isn't a hearing, then we need to do our utter best to communicate to the community that, if I'm hearing and translating everything correctly in my own mind, the Board of Ed is not stopping redistricting forever. The Board of Ed wants to consider it much more comprehensively relative to implications from the blueprint for Maryland's future. Capital projects within your CIP timeline, the board has taken, the board will be considering taking an interim step of commissioning a feasibility. We would try to lay out what I think we're hearing you say tonight, so that that's also, you know, the other side of it, that that's also very clear to the community that this is what's happening. Don't go back and not pay attention to us anymore. We're not stopping this. We're trying to approach it in a different way, gathering more information. So, and we could send that out through communications with Cary. We could probably put that on the splash page of the SARC part of your website as well, so that it's there at least, so that people understand that's what's happened now. Please stay tuned for all of these things. I'm sorry to cut you off.
Oh, no, not at all.
And I hope Cindy, Mrs. McCabe's agreeing with what I'm saying.
I'd like, if it's okay, if you're not done, please finish. I'd like to catch Emily, and then, since you're the one that needs to make the recommendation, I'd like to hear your summary, Emily, if that's okay.
Yeah, that was the last thing that I wanted to ask, was just if we go down that path of not having a hearing, but we would clearly need to, we would need to communicate very clearly with the community of what this all means, and the fact that we are moving this forward, just not at sort of the breakneck pace that we were doing previously, because there's other things that we need to consider. Are we meeting the requirements of our own policy?
Yes.
Okay. If we did not hold the hearing now, but we're still moving forward at a more measured and more comprehensive pace?
Yeah, because you're going to follow that policy, Emreg, when it's time.
Right, right, okay.
Yes. Ms. Tedeschi?
So I'd like to preface my points with some student input I had received directly from students, which thank you to the parents and community members and students who have given feedback. It's, we really do appreciate it. A lot of the connections between students within the southern area is stronger between southern area schools from Liberty all the way to South Carroll than it is moving northward. Because of the way that recreational sports are constructed, that's where you have the strongest bond. So a lot of century students, they don't want to be redistricted up to Westminster. They'd rather be redistricted out to South Carroll, because that's who they're familiar with. So if that is necessary to move students, high school students specifically, I know that high school isn't our area of interest, but even elementary schools who are participating in those recreational sports, they'd rather move to familiar faces rather than Westminster and northward. And I'm sure that northward students, if that domino effect would keep moving northward, would feel the same way. Also, kind of to that same point, a lot of the discomfort with the idea of redistricting is because there's this looming idea that this might not just fix our issue because of the Maryland blueprint, because of continuous development in the southern area. It's this idea of, we're going to redistrict and then open five years, we're going to have to do it again, and we're going to be right back to the drawing board. So I think we really need to balance this blueprint and the timing of this blueprint, as well as what we can do with construction to maximize redistricting what we need to, so we get to that ideal capacity, even though, like we discussed, capacity isn't necessarily the best marker, but it's just a general idea. What we can do to redistrict and add on construction would be ideal, so that we are moving the least amount of students but still making that ideal capacity. So then there's not this idea of, we're going to be redistricting again very soon here. So with the feasibility plans, I do think we should really move forward, because we don't want to have this imaginative idea of, this is what our ideal scenario looks like, and then we can't even get half of those classrooms into those schools. But I think what we should consider is, really look at the plans that the SARC has put together. They put together these wonderful plans. See to what extent do we want that plan? Is Plan D, for example, is D our favorite option? But if we can't get in eight classrooms, we can only get in three classrooms, would we still want that to be our primary option? To what extent? To what enrollment of pre-K would that be our primary option? If we exceed 200 students, would then we want to consider Option Two more so than Option Three? So I think we just need to sit down and consider each option and to what extent that would be our primary option, or under what conditions would that option change?
And before, Mrs. McCabe.
I want to use a card.
One of them. I'm sorry, didn't see it. I didn't look away.
He has a tendency to do that.
Is it safe for us to say tonight that we're at least looking at options that include the capital projects, which rules out Option One? Can we narrow it down to the second two?
I'm going to put this in my pocket. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's cool. I like this. Emily, very well said. And again, appreciation to the community for their participation, and to the county staff as well, for their participation. I learned a lot over the last two work sessions on the professionalism that you provided, the Board of Ed, along with staff, in looking through very complex, you know, concerns and issues. And you all said it very well. You know, I'm military, I always believe the enemy always has a vote. In this case, it's the environment. And like you shared, the environment has a vote. Post-COVID, blueprint not being defined yet, the competitive process with capital projects. We just established a professional fire department here in Carroll County. That's costing a lot of money. So there are a lot of capital projects that are out there that are going to be competing for, you know, a set amount of dollars. We have expenses or expenditures and, you know, money coming in, and the money coming in ain't a whole lot unless we change things. And there's no appetite to change things right now, because the environment is set. And we don't want to put it on the backs of our community to change revenue coming in, in a post-COVID, in inflationary type of, you know, times. So, not necessarily setting back, and I really appreciate the momentum in moving forward. You know, you may have heard the listen, learn, lead, listening to the community. We really did. And I want that to continue. I don't want that to slow down. Learning the different options with the environment changes, and then leaning together. And I think, you know, one idea, maybe my colleagues will kick me tomorrow in the shins, but instead of doing a September 21st, you know, venue for public hearing, doing something a little bit maybe later than that with the Board of Commissioners to describe the capital projects that you may be looking at doing, and the concerns that you have, you know, going into the next year. Because the public hearings that you would be having would probably be having in September of 2023. So it's only a year away. And you break down that year, we're right in the budget cycle, you know, starting in January, February. You don't just walk in and say, this is what we want. So maybe instead of doing that public hearing, having that joint meeting with us, highlighting the impact that the SARC has had, getting our buy-in with my colleagues on what you want to achieve, because there are, you know, events that are happening in the southern part of the county. There are four or five relatively large communities that are being grown. Some are 55-plus, some are mixed-use, but then there are others that are single-family homes that are going to be feeding into the elementary schools, or, no, into the school system. Let's leave it at that. They're not going to happen overnight, just like these decisions aren't happening overnight. We're not building 1,000 homes, you know, in 2022 or 2023. You know, it is going to be developed as we continue to progress. And we are in the preliminary stages in much of it. But in order for us to understand the preliminary stages and what can be allowed, and should be allowed, it dovetails with what we're doing, with what you're doing with the SARC and making the decisions. So I appreciate, one, allowing me to sit here with you. I think a feasibility study makes sense. If it's paired with you continuing to move forward, instead of doing a public hearing, an idea may be to do a joint board meeting. September 21st, I think is very quick from now, so maybe mid-October, late October, we can look at, you know, the dates that fit. And we set the stage, and let's be realistic, an election's coming up, you know, and there's going to be changes regardless. And it would be really cool to set the stage prior to an election coming up and not handing it over to a new group of folks. They may change over. They may say, no, we don't want to listen to that. But if we can give a little bit of crossing the Ts and dotting the Is, it's a pretty nice thing to have. Because, and we know, I mean, we know the environment. That's part of the environment. There's a lot of folks saying, oh, let's wait till after. Personally, I say, let's set it now and then move forward. So, just my two cents, and I'm done with my card. So.
Did you have your card up?
I did, but, that's fine. I just think we need to do it with the new board. Now, that's because everyone has different ideas. You know, because they're, the four will be finishing up, and we are going to need to work with the four new members. And they will have to do this journey with us. So that's my comment on that. And I definitely want those quarterly meetings. That's so important, whether there's election or not. We need to continue that.
And just to say, if we do with the new board, we're talking January, mid-January at the earliest. I mean, that's just reality. It would be mid-January. So, okay.
So you still have, our existing boards still have at least three months.
Yeah.
So to do a quarterly meeting.
You're still going to do a quarterly meeting.
Yeah, we still ought to do a meeting. We ought to do this, but I think we all need to recognize.
Let's do the quarterly meeting.
That in January it could change.
And I don't know when that comes up, but it should soon be coming. All we got on schedule.
I was going to say, I would like to have that as part of the next quarterly meeting. I think that would be, you know, this could be the main topic on the agenda.
Absolutely.
But is it unreasonable to say, you know, recognizing the fact that you're going to have four new members very shortly, but we don't necessarily want to wait until they're seated and up to speed, and in January, when you're already in the middle of the budgeting, you know, you're going to launch right into budgeting.
That's correct.
Would it be unreasonable to ask, you know, the candidates that are all Would it be unreasonable to ask, you know, the candidates that are already set? Plus, there's like a potential, there's really only one. To have them, whoa, whoops, sorry about that. To have them in the audience, at least listening to the discussions, so that they could get up to speed.
They, absolutely, they can be invited into the audience.
So, Kenny, where are you going to sit?
No, but, no, absolutely. They can be invited into the audience.
Based on how we're trying to get to Mrs. McCabe in the audience.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Just a thought.
No, I think it's a great idea.
But no, I think an October joint meeting would be super.
Next week, the candidates for the Board of Commissioners are coming into the county to learn kind of the county 101. Right? Next week. Yeah, so, having those invitations, we're already doing that, you know, to all of the candidates that are on the ballot. And, yeah, I think that's a great idea. We're going to continue to do that. So, inviting them to this, absolutely. So, yeah.
And we'd have to make sure that the Board of Ed candidates are invited as well. Because we don't know what this board is going to look like either.
So, where are you going to sit? You've got to be running back and forth.
So, did you want to, was that your comment, or do you want to say more?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Mrs. McCabe, with more information.
Well, this, I think this has been very productive conversation this evening. You know, I think the SARC has done a wonderful job of putting together comprehensive information for us to consider. And we've also been getting some really good feedback from our community. So, I just want to thank the parents and the students who have emailed us, communicated with us in some way. All of the information that we're receiving is being taken seriously into consideration as we move forward. I agree with so much of what's been said this evening. I think that we're definitely ready to do a feasibility study for Freedom and perhaps Sykesville. And that can be a conversation that we have at our next Wednesday's board meeting. I don't think we're ready.
I turned this thing off. I did flip the switch.
I thought Commissioner Rolstein had his card up again and trying to tell me.
I'm so sorry. I thought I had it on, but I didn't. I'm the Barry Dalton.
I don't think we're ready for a public hearing on the 21st. And, you know, I agree with what's been said tonight that we are still trying to become familiar with what the blue, how the blueprint for Maryland's future is going to play out for us, especially as it impacts our capital budget. And with the pre-K requirements and the requirements for planning time for teachers, there's just so much that's up in the air. And I agree that we don't want to make decisions too quickly now that will have to be revised or redone in the near future. You know, if, if, if and when we do redistricting, we want to do it well so that our students aren't, aren't constantly thinking, when is, when is this going to happen again to us? So, I think we need to keep moving forward, but taking it as slowly as possible and making sure that we clearly understand the blueprint requirements and implications before we make decisions. And finally, I would just say that I agree that our students have been through a lot over the past three years. We have, we have told everyone that our focus is going to be on getting back to the basics of teaching and learning. And that is very difficult for everyone to do when everyone is planning for redistricting and just going through the anxiety that comes with that for students and their families. So, at this point, you know, to summarize what's been said and to just put my two cents in, I think that we should move forward with looking at the feasibility study and then waiting a little bit on the redistricting until we know what is required with blueprint. And at this point, I'm not sure when we're going to have that information. Mr. O'Neil, do you have input into when we may get more clarification?
A tiny bit, I guess. We do know by October 23, and so it could be in advance of October 23. But we do know that by October 23, the IAC will have to define in some way eligible space specific to the blueprint. So, they'll be, even if we don't have it yet by the spring or summer, I'm sure the staff there will be working and will be aware of that process and gaining some insight. As far as the, sort of the policy parts of the blueprint, we should be receiving any day now the Accountability and Implementation Board's guidelines, I'm sorry, I have it in reverse order, the Maryland State Department of Ed's guidelines for what will ultimately be the first submission of every local Board of Ed's comprehensive blueprint implementation plan. In December of this calendar year, we will have the model plan or the state plan upon which we'll have to base, all 24 of us will have to base our local plans. That gets submitted to the AIB and the State Department of Ed in, I think it's specifically, I think it's March 15, 2023. And we know that we'll get feedback on that up to and including approval. And I do think that it may not be the, it'll always be moving. But it'll be the first time officially where we say, for instance, here's what we're planning with pre-K, and they tell us what they think. And part of what we're planning will be to note, it does not appear right now that we have a 50-50 partnership possibility here, but our capital plan is considering 50%. And they'll be able to respond to that. So, it might always be a moving target, and I guess we need to be aware of that and be clear on that. It might always be somewhat a moving target. There may never be a date certain where they say, on stone tablets, here's everything that will ever be about the blueprint. But we will be getting much more official guidance in that March, April, May timeline on the blueprint than we've ever had. And that would pair nicely, I think, with the timeline for a feasibility study. You'd be getting a lot of important information right at that same moment, before your next facilities master plan is considered.
And I'm wondering, do we have a consensus that we're moving forward with the redistricting, but we're gathering more information, doing a feasibility study? Right now, the timing, it's more important to have a joint meeting with the commissioners than it is to try to have a public meeting without the facts. We need to recognize that the blueprint, enrollment, none of that's ever going to be scientifically down to the number that we'd like it to hear, we'd hear, but we need to keep working. We did not rule out any of the three, but it's safe to say, unless they all leave the county, the committee is not done. We're going to just, they would have adjusted as we got input, and we still want that, correct?
Absolutely.
And, and we need a communication to go out to the public saying that there's no public meeting and that we're, and what all, we're planning on. And that we still, they can continue to provide comments as they wish, but.
And please do, because we want to hear it.
Yes, yes, but, you know, some of those opinions may change as we get more information. And, and so the feasibility study or studies, we will plan to have it on the agenda for next, and then we can discuss how we want to do that then.
Yes.
So, does that make sense?
And then we can get some information out to the community about when that joint, our next quarterly joint meeting will take place.
Yeah, I mean, we could do a joint press release on doing that. That's easy.
Yeah, so both sides can go ahead and start scheduling that and make it fit in. And, and I don't know, where are we, where are we due to have it? We may have a larger audience than we typically get, inviting candidates and whatever.
What?
What's that?
He said Johansson.
Johansson. There's room there.
I think we're due to have it here this time. I think we had it.
Yeah, I can't remember.
If I can look, I'm not sure.
But we, we'll work through that.
But we do need, we want to make sure we include candidates on both sides and the public. And I think we're going to maybe get a larger audience than we, not that our meeting, joint meetings are boring and we don't get many people, but this one, there may be some excitement.
But another, I am having, because you mentioned town halls, I am having a town hall down in that area on September 20th of all dates. And the CCPS leadership did agree to attend, having one at 10:30 and then one at 6:00. So, any of you want to attend or participate or feel free, just letting people know when we're trying to get that out, because there's just a lot of activity, activities, excuse me, happening down in the southern part, so.
Where is that going to be?
At the Senior Center.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll have Mr. Prokop and Mr. Hardisty as co-chairs write formally to the members of the SARC. So, that'll be one more official thing that'll happen, to let them know where we are and that they will be invited back to be part of it when it reconvenes. Just to be clear, we can make them sir. We, you know, it'll be up to those parent members if they choose to stay with it next year.
None of them ran out yet.
That's true. We'll offer them that opportunity.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Thank you again to everyone who participated. I think it's been great discussion.